I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fathers, we come together today as commissioned. We ask your guidance in the business of the county. As we canvass the vote today, let us be thankful that we do live in a great country that we do, that we do have the right to vote, to choose our leaders. And we give thanks for all the veterans who gave their lives over the course of the centuries that made this possible for us. We also today would like to extend the grief, the family of Cliff Mayo, who passed away Saturday. We pass our condolences to him. Cliff was a long-term county commissioner and leader in the community, and he's a, he's a good man, and he will be missed. Further, Lord, we ask you continue to remember us for life-giving worship for our region, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Good morning, all. As you can tell, I am not Lon Pishney. He is absent today, so there are no comments from the chair. Consent agenda, need a motion, please?
I move we accept the consent agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
Been moving to second and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Public comments. Dr. Hannigan, I think you're first up. You're on the front row, so.
Thank you, thank you. I, I wanted to take a few minutes to update you on the progress of the Western Kansas corridor and address a couple issues that we were having with Phase Two. When I started the project based on a timeline that we drew up off of our experiences working with the city, the corridor would have been completed August 1st. Everyone on my end has adhered to the timeline up until last week. The county did not. Last week, I found out that because of the delays, we are now in the cold weather season, and the asphalt plant is no longer able to service the finishing of the roads. Unless we get a warm spell, there's a good chance that my first phase will be delayed until next spring. I had a letter of intent from a client who we'd come to an agreement on one of the largest lots in the first phase. The key letter of intent, because it was my first, establishes the market, takes me off of, takes me, or at least puts me in a position where it could take a lot of pressure off of me. I lost that client in the middle of September because I couldn't close, because of the delays, because of the changes in the economy. I had a second client come to me after, ready with cash in hand for a smaller lot, but needed to start construction in October, and I couldn't service that request. That was with the first phase. Some kind of, like some kind of slow learner, I entered into this process again for my second phase. I have two clients who want land, but not in the first phase. They want it in the second phase. One of those lots is the largest lot in the development, ten acres, ten times the size of the lots that I have, many of the lots that I have in the first phase, the largest lot I have. I can't close any of these clients until I have completed the project. How hard did I think the second phase process should be? We'd already worked out all of these hard things in the first phase, yeah? The county has had my development agreement for ten weeks with no resolution. Apparently, there's a problem with access to Eighth Street, which essentially is the back of the development and an unimproved road. You've already approved access to Eighth Street in the first phase. I received an email from Curtis Logsdon, and it says, "On the 28th, we will have a meeting to discuss with the developer or has authorized contact the options moving forward with the developer wishing to have access onto Eighth Street." We've already had one of those meetings, unfortunately. Mr. Logsdon and Mr. Reese didn't attend the meeting. Mackenzie Phillips attended the meeting, but she's a new employee. She essentially didn't really have a full grip of what the problem was. We left that meeting three, three weeks ago. We left that meeting with the idea that she would follow up, and they would communicate to me with what the problem is with Eighth Street. Never heard back, got this email. This email goes on to say, "The Finney County regulations state," by the way, this is my first actual understanding of the problem, in an email, not through a meeting, not through the first meeting that I had actually attended, took time to clear my schedule, had my professionals ready and on hand for that meeting, but this one actually explains the problem. "The Finney County regulations state that the road will need to be updated at the applicant's expense. Finney County will only be requiring this to happen if the developer wishes to use Eighth. If no access are used, then the requirement is not a concern. The requirement is not be a concern. This should not be a major shock to anyone, as these regulations have been in place since 1996." Okay, fair enough. As a developer, it's on me to know the regulations? I can't help but ask myself, did he inform y'all when you approved access to Eighth Street in my first phase? Did he, did he know, did he not know that those regulations were in place? Did Mr. Logsdon not know those regulations were in place? Or did he know and not tell you when you approved access to Eighth Street in my first phase? If it wasn't for the cold weather, the street would be poured to Eighth Street. I've already assumed the expenses of that access. Why? It doesn't actually add any value to any of my lots. Those accesses, the one in the first phase and now this one in the second phase, they're there because everyone that I, that advises me said they needed to be there for safety reasons. I gave up part of my lots, and I incurred the expense of putting the roads in for safety purposes. I don't need Eighth Street. I think it's crazy not to give me access to it from a safety perspective. It is, it is a county taxpayer-owned road, but I don't have to have it to sell lots. I can tell you that if, for some crazy reason, you decide that the approved road that you had in the first phase will no longer access Eighth Street, the expenses that I put into it, I will pursue a recoup of those expenses. What you want to do with the second road, access to Eighth Street, totally up to you. It matters not, but it is continuing to delay my project. We are going down the same road we went down in the first phase, and I'm at risk of losing clients as I did in the first phase. When I stood up here the first two times, I talked about how I really want to, I really want to develop in this area. I really want to partner with the city and the county. I want to put my money here. I want to work with y'all. But I tried to remind you that my experience is going to set the tone for what it's like to work with the county. I tried to help you understand that this is not just about me. It's about the people that come from, come behind me, and that how you treat me is going to determine whether or not there'll be other opportunities for the county. I, I, I can't help but point out, not just for y'all, but for everyone who's watching. Think of this opportunity for the county. I want to put $8 million into this project. The city, or the, I'm sorry, the county is not going to put any. If I'm wrong, I lose my $8 million. You'll lose nothing. And you have actually a development that's sitting up there for maybe the next person who wants to try this. If I'm right, the county gets an estimated $60 million of increased tax base. And I get treated like the help. I get treated like I'm a bother. I don't receive information firsthand. I get these sarcastic emails. I get meetings that they don't show up to. I, I did a development project with the city. It was a tiny one. They treated me like a king, and they stayed on schedule the entire time. In fact, they didn't just do their stuff. They helped me do my stuff, because I was inexperienced. Gentlemen, if you want to do some kind of development that's going to help, help your tax base, you got no shot at it when you have Mr. Logsdon and Mr. Reese in place. I, I tried to help you see that, and in fact, I did actually start another development project. In combination with partners, I bought land on 156. I didn't have to annex it. Last week, I did. I will not do another project with Mr. Logsdon and Mr. Reese in place. And anyone else that I get the chance to tell, I will tell them they should not either. Stewardship, customer service, integrity, collaboration, it's right behind your, your heads. I, I'm here again to urge you. For the sake of this county, I love this county. I respect every single one of you individually to the nth degree, but collectively, y'all ain't doing your job. I hope, I pray, for someone who will, who's a member of this community, who, who wants to work with you. I hope that on this third occasion, you won't just listen to me. You'll actually hear me. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We need to, any other public comments? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Need a motion to go to Board of Canvassing ballots?
Chairman?
Yes.
I'll move that we recess the county commission meeting, reconvene as a board of canvassers for our election.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Abbott is going to lead us through this process. Morning.
Good morning. Did you need to appoint someone in place for Lon?
That's right. Is Micah here?
No.
Huh. She was the one that we were going to appoint. Just. Any registered voter?
Any, yeah, any qualified elector in Finney County can be appointed to service canvasser. It could be one of your directors in this building, staff in this building, somebody close by.
That would probably be the best they do is. Okay. Just to set you to do it.
You'll need to nominate and then make a vote for that.
Okay. Need a nomination for Trista to be the.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Trista Joyce. I'll second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're in.
Good sitting. Bossman's chair.
Good morning, commissioners. We provided you with a packet of information that'll include the election standards and the provisional ballot chart. That's what helped us guide in making the recommendation to you on whether or not to count the ballots within a group. We also provided to you a list of the statutes that apply to any of the ballots that we have today. And as done in the past, we grouped them in various groups based on what the situation was. We will go through each of the groups, and we will make you a mo, and you will make a motion whether or not to accept or reject the ballots. So the first group that we have is ballots C-001 through C-003. These ballots were due to name change. Most likely, it could have been due to a marriage. The voter did provide their new name, and they updated the registration. Our recommendation is to accept these ballots.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll move to approve for count ballots C-001 through C-003. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Our next group is ballot C-004 through C-038. In this group, the ballots, the voters were not currently registered. Kansas law does require to be registered before voting. Our recommendation is to reject these ballots.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reject ballots four through eight.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hit the little button.
Our next group is ballot C-039 through C-049. These are voters who moved to Finney County from out of county, and they were registered in a different county. Our recommendation is to not count these.
Who wants to make a motion?
Trista's turn.
I'll make a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reject ballots nine through 49.
Do I hear a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next group is ballot C-050 through C-102. These voters are registered in Finney County. They moved within the county, and they voted their correct ballot. Our recommendation is to accept these ballots.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept ballots C-050 through.
102.
C-102, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Our next group is C-103 through C-105. These were also move-in county, but due to poll worker error, they didn't vote their correct ballot. Our recommendation is to accept a partial count. For that, we will look at the ballot that they should have received and the one they did receive, and will only count the races that are the same on both ballots.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move we accept those ballots for partial count C-0, I'm sorry, C-103 through C-105.
All in favor? Or did you get?
Second.
Second, sorry, Bob. All in favor?
Aye.
Ballots C-106 through C-115. These are voters that requested a ballot be mailed to them, but they also came to vote in person. At the time of voting, at the polling location, they were issued a provisional ballot. Afterwards, we verified that they did not cast two ballots. These voters did only receive one ballot, are recommended, they only submitted that one ballot. Our recommendation is to accept these ballots.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept C-106 through 115.
I'll second that motion.
It's moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Ballot C-116 through C-126. The voters were not found in the poll books at the polling location. After researching, we did find they were registered in our county. This is just a clerical error. Our recommendation is to accept the ballots.
Give that lady a chance.
Okay, Trista.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to accept ballot C-116 through C-126.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
She said 126, shouldn't it be 128?
No, it's 126.
126, okay, thank you, sorry.
Okay, our next group is C-127 through C-128. These mail ballots were received after election date with no postmark. Mail ballots must be postmarked by election day to be eligible for counting. Our recommendation is not to accept these ballots.
In motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we deny C-127 and C-128.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, ballot, ballot C-129. The ID was not provided at the time of voting at the polling location. The law requires voter to provide ID to have their ballot counted. We did contact the voter, and they brought in a proof of ID before canvass date. We did make a copy, if you guys need to look at that, and our recommendation is to accept the ballot.
I'll offer the motion to approve for count C-129.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ballot C-130. The ID was also not provided for this voter. Law requires the voter to provide an ID. We did contact the voter multiple times, and. We did contact the voter multiple times and speak with the voter. They're, on this one, they didn't provide the ID to us. So therefore, our recommendation is not to accept the ballot.
Mr. Chairman, I move we reject C-130. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Ballot C-131. This ballot was received by mail. We do verify signatures that are on the envelope to what we have in our system and the signatures didn't match. We contacted the voter and notified her she needed to come in person. She stated that she told her grandma to sign for her. She wishes to disregard the vote, the voted ballot as she is unable to come and sign because she no longer lives in Finney County. We did let her know she needs to update her registration where she currently lives now. So our recommendation is to reject the ballot.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to reject ballot C-131.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ballot C-132. This provisional was due to a clerical error. The voter was found to be actively registered in Finney County. There was just a discrepancy on their date of birth. So our recommendation is to accept the ballot.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept ballot C-132.
Second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Ballot C-133 through C-135. These three ballots are technical errors. The voters did not move. They just simply went to the wrong polling location and insisted on voting at the wrong precinct. So our recommendation would be just to do a partial count. So on those, well, compared to the ballot, they should have received and what they did receive and only count the races that are the same on both ballots.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer the motion to approve C-133 through C-135 for partial count. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Gabby. What, you need to re...
So you'll need to recess as the Board of County Canversers now and take back up as the Board of County Commissioners. I might expect this to take an hour and a half to two hours. It really depends on how many we end up having to hand count, how many the machine can't read.
Okay. So if we get done before 11:00, we need to be back here by 11:00, you think?
At the earliest, yes.
How about noon? I don't...
More time would be better. I mean, you know, we don't rush it because we want it to be accurate.
What about 1:00?
1:00 we could do.
Okay.
Without doubt.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn this canvassing session until 1:00 and reconvene at that time.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Second.
We need to reconvene those two.
Yeah.
Reconvene at 1:00, okay.
1:00. And then you, are you gonna make a motion, reconvene as Commissioners?
Yes.
Okay.
So we, do we need to vote on the closing this first and then reconvene?
Become a County Commission again is what we need to...
Okay. I move we reconvene our County Commission meeting.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we're good to go.
Did you have anything else, Gabby?
I mean, we do have our provisional board here ready to go do, run the ballots through the machine. Any machine, any ballot that doesn't go through the machine or the partial counts, we will do a hand count on those. So as soon as we're done, we'll update our reports and then bring you guys final results. And if you would like for me to bring up any tapes, just let me know and I can bring those up here, too.
Thank you very much, Gabby, and thank you all of you for volunteering and helping. Your turn.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are here this morning regarding the approval, the final approval of the RHID for Randall Estates. This is the public hearing. Commissioner Jones, I believe it may be necessary to at least inquire of those present whether or not anyone wishes to speak on the issue.
I don't see hands up.
Okay. So the other requirement here, so I'm appearing this morning as a representative of the county. I know the developer, Jim Randall, is here along with Lana DuVall from Finney County Economic Development on behalf of the project. The requirements statutorily that should be included in your packet are the legal descri... The legal description, the current assessed value, the names and addresses of the owners, that being solely Jim Randall in this particular situation, the general description of the housing project, the addresses and the specific interest of the proposed, of the proposed district, and then the contractual assurances, which I think are in there as part of the development plan and ultimately is the development agreement that you guys will continue to look at and approve. And then the feasibility study that was previously approved and looked at by you as Commissioners. Today, the appropriate action is the adoption of this plan and designation of Randall Estates as an RHID. I would note for everyone and for the public that the taxing entity for the school district does have the absolute right to object to this within 30 days. And if they do so, that puts the kibosh, so to speak, on this project. But that's the proposal this morning.
457 in the school district.
Correct.
Comments? Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. Yeah. Sorry, Lana DuVall, Finney County Economic Development. Did you want to comment about that we will be coming back with amended amounts?
Actually, I did, I did have that, yeah. That was in my mind, I forgot to say that. Yes, thank you, thank you, Lana. The developer has advised us that the costs and of this project are going to be re-presented. So the feasibility study, I think the numbers all still apply. I still think we'll still get that increased value and the increased tax benefit. But of course, as all of you know, our economy is such that these prices that were originally submitted to us are changing and that will change for the developer as well. I didn't think that should be an impediment, based on my reading of the statute, to us approving this as an RHID this morning.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments? Lana?
If we approve it though, the way it is now, and then the dollars change, do we need to do something different again?
No, no. What that will affect is just reworking the feasibility and the payback numbers, et cetera. So the costs are ballparked. But what we're paying for, so like, the road infrastructure that we're paying for, even though the cost has increased, we've already made that agreement through the RHID that those costs can be recouped by the developer through the increase in the taxes. So although the cost increases, what we've agreed to for the repayment through the increase in tax revenue is the same.
And then in your cover letter, you basically said this is the last step.
Correct.
The last step except for one more step that the 457 has the right to object. Can the developer start now or does he have to wait the next 30 days or however long 457 has to respond or not respond?
I think the appropriate action would be for them to wait because it is an absolute right of 457. So yes, this is our final approval. However, the statute is written such that it gives an additional 30 days.
And then does it come back to us again in 30 days or if they don't respond, it goes into effect?
If they don't respond, it goes into effect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
And Linda? Are there two actions today then? The development agreement and the resolution adoption?
Sorry, I don't have the agenda in front of me. I just brought the statutes in front of me. The develop, the development agreement, yes, I believe is on. And then the resolution, the resolution proceeding with the adoption of Randall Estates as an RHID.
Yeah. The only other thing to your question, Commissioner Kreiter, the only other thing I would comment on is that we will have to come back with those amended costs to allow it to go all the way up to what it actually costs to do it. There is a, that it requires that you don't pay out more than is approved or longer than it's approved for, so, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the developer's agreement as submitted. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, on the resolution, be Finney County 2022-20, right?
I'll offer the motion to approve that I don't...
Resolution 47, 2022?
Correct. That's what I said.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good to have you back, Dory.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning.
Morning.
Prostate surveying, on behalf of James Randall's, requesting approval of the final plat for Randall Estates. The site is generally located at 9250 North Highway 50 and is currently zoned RR Rural Residential. The Randall Estates development is 78.63 acres for a proposed single-family residential development. The proposed development will have 17 lots ranging from 2.24 acres to 6.42 acres. This development will be requesting the use of an RHID. The fourth submittal of the final plat was submitted for review on September 12th of 2022 and no major concerns were declared. The Planning Commission also did recommend approval at the August 18th, 22, 2022 Planning Commission meeting. And there are two alternatives. The governing body may approve of the final plat or the governing body may not approve of the final plat. And staff recommends alternative one.
What's your desire?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the final plat as presented. I'll second. That's resolution number 50?
No, there's no resolution for this. This is just a plus, approval of the plat.
Second?
Okay. Discussion? Pretty well covered. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Trista?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
So Finney County has previously established an account with the State of Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. The previously designated authorized signers for this account are no longer officers of Finney County. Designating new authorized signers would bring Finney County back into compliance and potentially allow deposits into the MIP. Keep in mind that, that any monies that Finney County have need to be, we need to get a proposal from local banks prior to depositing with the MIP. With the financial climate, I don't anticipate any local banks declining funds. So this is just a matter of cleanup, making sure that our signatories are, are up to date. So I would ask that, that the Commission consider signing a resolution to allow the, or allowing the Vice Chair to sign a resolution to designate those authorized signers for Finney County.
Okay. What is your desire, Commissioners?
You're the only name on this, is that correct?
Currently, yes.
I don't have the deal in front of me. I move we approve Resolution 47-2022.
And authorize the...
And authorize the Chairman to sign.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair to sign.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Dawn? You're in charge of the signpost, cutting edges.
Kind of scary, isn't it? Dawn Boyd, Public Works Office. And we opened a couple of bids. For one, the first one was for the cutting edges for the motor graders. Get through all my papers here. We opened them on November 3rd at 10:15 at the Public Works Office. We received three bids, Wellborn Sales, Foley Equipment and Van Kepel. Wellborn Sales was the low bid. And we, the alternatives are accept low bid or reject all bids.
What question? Quality's the same on all the cutting edges, I take it, or...
And we actually changed the specs for this bid. We were just doing, they were just standard high carbon and curved double bevel. And this time, we went to a through hardened to a minimum of Rockwell RC-43, which I've been told is that it, it uses a process that it hardens the whole bid bit so that it should wear better, longer use out of it. And we're also trying just a little bit thicker blade to see how we get the wear out of it, if it'll be worth going to that thicker blade.
Okay. Dave?
Question, Dawn. My memory tells me that we've, that you've done business with Wellborn before, is that correct?
Yes.
So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd offer a motion to approve Wellborn's bid $41,636.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Hey, signposts.
Okay. Signposts were the second bid that we took and we received three bids from them also, Wellborn Sales, Newman Signs and National Sign Company. We did spec out two different heights on the bids because we were setting our signposts at a minimum of five and a half feet from ground to sign. And Kurt wanted to raise the minimum to seven foot, so we ordered two, two different heights in signs. And the alternatives are accept low bid from National Sign or reject all bids.
Now, these are, are wood or metal posts?
Metal posts.
Metal posts, okay.
And these bids are for the exact same signs?
Yes.
No difference in that?
Right.
Bids on the heights or anything?
Yeah, just, just the height.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the low bid as presented. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Good job.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Mr. Vice Chairman, before we move on, I believe I misspoke on the resolution number for Randall Estates. So if we could rescind that original motion, it needed to be Resolution Number 46, 2022.
Who wants to make that motion?
We have to vote to rescind it and then vote...
Yeah, I would think so because you approved 47 as Randall Estates and 47 was not Randall Estates.
Who made the motion to approve it?
Dwayne.
Mr. Chairman, I move we rescind the motion that approved 47-2022 Resolution and instead replace it with Resolution 46-20-22.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does that clean us up, Dory?
I think so. Can they do that all in one motion like that? Yeah. I think we're good. Thank you and I apologize.
Any opinion on that?
Okay.
Good.
Got a request that we deviate from the agenda for a exec committee, I mean,
Negative.
Executive Session Committee. Executive Session, starting in about three minutes for approximately 10 minutes and with...
For non-elected?
For non-elected personnel, it'll be Robert and...
Curtis is not here?
Curtis is not here.
Curtis is not here.
And McKenzie's not. Okay. So...
And it lasting how long?
15 minutes.
I'll offer the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's just Commissioners and Administrator?
Yes.
Okay.
It was taken.
Who wants to make the motion that we go back in for another 30 minutes?
Mr. Chairman, if we reenter Executive Section, same people, same topic for additional 20 minutes.
Second.
All fair.
Alright.
Okay, you want to also include Linda?
Include Linda in my motion then.
Okay.
They'll probably be done about eleven.
Okay. Do you...
Um, we did say that...
That's doing so important that you're gonna delay us all.
I've got a deal I need to be at here in about an hour or two hours at noon.
Come back and eat chili?
No, that's next time.
That's next, that's next time. So, uh, we're out of executive session, no action was taken. You guys want to recess till one o'clock? Is that...
Want to take reports?
Oh. I didn't want to fuck you up. Okay. Robert, I guess you're first on the list.
Um, well, what you received this morning from Jenny was the financials. We can talk about on the fifth a little bit as we're preparing for year end, any transfers and what we're looking at for fund balance towards years, year end. Keep in mind, the report that we've received today was the end of October financial report, so we're going down the road on that and for that project there. You have a number of other activities that you have coming up here. You have your, um, chamber, regional chamber this evening, I believe that kicks off at six, that's in Dodge that I think, I don't know how many is going to the...
Wayne and I are going, I don't know if anybody else.
And just confirming, Robert's going as well?
Say it again.
Micah called just to get a final count for this evening.
You, you wanna go?
Yeah, I'll probably end up going too.
I mean, you wanna ride with us or...
I might wanna do that.
Okay.
So, three of you?
Yep.
Okay.
We're not breaking any rules, are we? Love those things. Okay.
So, all right.
Question?
I do have a question. Any update on the fire station ambulance building or the, anything on that one?
Uh, city had a meeting on Friday afternoon on that. Looks like they are pursuing the option of going, um, CMR, construction management at risk process, and so they will be sending out a request for proposals on that. They'll have a meeting on that on the sixth, December sixth, and potentially sending that out on the seventh with those bids being due on the twenty-second and of December, so they'll...
That's gonna help with the bonding and all that, is...
Well, in essence, it's allowing them to, them, the, any contractor then to figure out a way to make this thing work and give you a, give the city then a proposal on the maximum amount on it.
Okay.
So, that, that will take place hopefully on the sixth, so they can get that out. Your turn.
My turn. Uh, I, I think probably most importantly, last week we did oral arguments with regard to the conditional use permits for the, for Finney County, the appeal for Huber Sand. So, those were in Wichita in front of a three, three judge panel, and so I'll let you guys know when we get a ruling on that. But in all candor, it did feel favorable toward the county just as far as what the justices were asking questions about, but you know, I could, I could be wrong.
Okay, this is your last official meeting.
This is my last official meeting, yes.
We appreciate your service and work for us.
It's been my pleasure, it's been...
Can we hug her or anything like that?
You'll have to ask her.
Yeah, yeah, get permission from Kelly.
Yeah.
No.
Okay, Dave?
I don't have much, Mr. Chairman. Dawn Boyd went through the records and found, finally found a solid waste committee report from a year ago, and, and next year will be a five-year anniversary, which requires a more thorough review of the plan, but we had a solid waste committee meeting and, and then she sent out the, after finding the, the, what do I wanna say, the bylaws is wrong, but the, the rules of the game, she sent those out so we can start thinking about what needs to be modified, if anything. Another meeting that I attended that I think you'll find some interest in was the Highway four hundred meeting, and that was at Pierceville in, uh, last Tuesday, um, between the airport where the four lane ends and Cimarron, um, the Ike project has now boosted that forward for consideration of construction in, in fiscal year twenty-five. That's not far away, and it's in two phases, but those two phases will run almost simultaneously, they think, and, um, it will be a four lane divided with an at-grade intersection every two miles, which means that there are a whole lot of frontage roads, for example Charleston, they, you don't get on a four hundred at Charleston, you gotta go on a frontage road a mile away to, one way or the other, to get onto the, to the road, so, but here in Finney County, we have kind of the, the same thing with, with frontage roads from, from, um, Pole Line to, to, uh, Pierceville to, so we're gonna inherit some more highway, and I asked the question, who gets to, to maintain that, who owns those frontage roads in the county will? Ron Hall said that the, the desire of the planning committee for KDOT was to have each county participate at about ten percent, but in order to spread that out over years, that ten percent would be in, in the upkeep, maintenance of these frontage roads and so on, as opposed to digging in their pocket and handing them some cash.
What, I have a question, Pole Line, what's, well, Pole Line's already four lane.
Well, I'm talking about where that stuff comes back into the, instead of running straight into, into the bypass down east, what, what road is it there that, doing that?
Oh, by the elevator?
Yeah, I'd have to get my map out.
Anyway, they're gonna make a lot of frontage lo, road along the east side of the four lane.
They're gonna have a whole lot of blacktop frontage roads that they'll put in and then hand over to the counties, and that's my point.
Mennonite road.
Mennonite, yeah, Mennonite, sorry. Gray County's obligation, according to law, is about five million dollars, which is way more than their budget for, for road and bridge for, for a year's period. I, I don't know whether ours will be much different, we, they didn't have figures for us to come home with, but at some point, I think you, we wanna invite, uh, somebody from KDOT to come in and visit with us a little bit about...
So, they're going to, they've already got the right-of-way purchase for this?
No, no, that's all coming in, uh, they got some of the right-of-way.
They're gonna do this in when?
They're, they're shooting for fiscal year twenty-five, that's...
Ooh, they're optimistic.
Yeah, very optimistic. I will be, I will be retired from the commission by then, so you guys can worry about it. The only other thing, Saturday I had a visit, had a call from a, from a former county administrator, and he was in town, Randy was, and so we went and had coffee, and this is about old times, and, and, well, it was, well, Catherine got her hair fixed so that she could play the guitar at your Catholic church service that Saturday night, so, anyway, like I said, I don't have much to report, that's it.
Okay, Dwayne?
I had a convention and visitors bureau meeting, kinda business as usual, everything's pretty much, uh, lined up for next quarter, they presented that schedule for the next six months, and, uh, other than that, their finances look very well, very good, could set a, could set a record for the, uh, guest stacks this year, they're doing really well. And then Dave passed off one to me, after the Veterans Day parade Saturday, I spoke to the luncheon afterwards to the veterans for, just to brief, and I mentioned and expressed Finney County Commission's appreciation of our veterans, that's it.
Appreciate you're doing that.
Yeah, I had planning commission, it was pretty small agenda, and we've had two different workforce, task force meetings. The high school is having a career fair on December the eighth, on Thursday, and they're looking for additional businesses to attend and share with the students about what the opportunities are here, and we would encourage any enrolled businesses that are interested to start learning how to share with these students, it would be awesome, so, I think that's what I have.
Okay. Um, the only thing I had, I attended a couple of political meetings and, and missed the, uh, Finney County aging meeting, I need a little more notice on that one, other than that...
If you'd like to go to a meeting, the library board meets at five o'clock tonight, you're welcome to come and...
I think I'm gonna be in Dodge City at the legislative, uh, meeting.
I just don't, don't want you to feel left out.
No, I'm not left out, so, if nothing else, we will reconvene at, uh, one o'clock.